We're moving pretty quick. We should slow down, sir. Slow down. Well, we got an early start on the meeting. Look at that, it's an hour and a half. All right, how about the meeting agenda? Is it approval for that?
Make a motion that we approve.
I'll start.
Moved seconded to approve the meeting agenda as presented. All in favor with aye.
Aye.
Goes. Huh, nothing to announce. No appointments, no awards. But thanks for coming. We can recognize the winners and the losers. All right, so now we go down to the dissent agenda.
Move that we exempt the consent agenda?
That's pretty much in line with last year. It was about 11,000 in permits there. And for the total of this year, we brought in about $52,000. So we're moving right along. The inspections, however, have doubled. Last year, this time, I was doing like, I did like 24 inspections, and now I'm up to 51 inspections for the month of May. So we're moving right along there. It's the season. We've got another grant. I know you guys are probably getting tired of hearing "another grant." But this one was, we applied for this back in September of 2018. If you remember, it was the Energy Department, Department of Commerce, the Energy Division. McKinstry came and did a bunch of, they drew some plans, they figured out what energy deficiencies there were, and along with the solar. So that was two grants. There was the energy one and the solar one. We did not get the solar one, unfortunately. So the solar array that we wanted to put on the water plant, we probably won't be doing that right away. But this grant is for $136,000, and it will do, the water plant had, needed some heat, and some lights, upgrade of lights, and also the pumping station had a heating problem too. So we didn't get that. I don't know much about it, I just learned about this on Friday. We're going to have a webinar on Thursday to learn more about it. So that's McKinstry.
Is this the pump station of the Yakima River?
Yakima River Pump Station. What happened? This might be interesting. Is when the water plant and the pump station were built, they're built at the same time, the furnace was switched somehow.
So the little one is up here and the big one's down there?
Well, that's what, yeah, but it was actually the opposite rate because there's more load down there than up there. That's what, that's what, that's what we found out, is somehow it got switched, and we're having a hard time keeping that cooled down there. And having a hard time keeping that warm up there. So it's kind of, kind of weird. But this is, you know, 15, 16 years ago that that happened. So that's, that's a grant we just got. I'm not sure how we're going to phase it in, you know, because we do have to come up with, you know, like a three to one, so they're one to our three. So it's, we do have to come up with, it's needed, so we'll have to phase this, the projects in. And then kind of another fun fact, so I guess you're right, Jay, this is a fun part of the meeting. Every year, the census, well, the, what is this, the Office of Financial Management, they give the census out, and this is just an estimate for this, this year, 2019. But back in 2010, they, they, we had the census taken at 1,872 people. So last year, the estimate was 1,875. So in eight years, you know, we grew through three people. So for this year, believe it or not, we're up to 1,915. So that's 40 people. That's 40 people in one year that we grew, so.
This is an estimate?
This is an estimate, right. This is an estimate. You can see every year, I've got a whole, I've got 10 years of estimates, and it's all flatlined until, until this one. So I think we're growing. I think ours next year is the, is where we get counted, 2020. And we'll find that, yeah, I guess the city is really growing. That's all I have for right now.
On the, the grant for 136,000, we have to come up with what on that?
We probably have to come up with two times that. So probably, and I don't have the.
208,000.
For the furnaces?
Yeah. Well, what it is, is what, what would they decide to do is, is do radiant heat with gas radiant heat. And so it was always designed for the water plant, and this is the main, the bay area, what do you call that, Willie?
Filter deck?
The filter, the filter area. It has four space heaters about that big, and it doesn't keep, keep, some of them, doesn't keep it warm enough. And so they're, they're proposing, so it was not designed correctly. So they're proposing big radiant gas heat strips through the ceiling. And so it's actually not fixing a problem, well, it's fixing a problem, but it's not, it was designed that way to begin with.
But how can that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Hundreds of thousands.
What's the end time, you say?
Yeah, well, it's, it's three to one. It's three to one, so, well, again, I'll get you the bid, and I think the bid was, was near, nearing 400,000. And it was for.
Heat.
Yeah, for heat, for lights, furnace down there, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not cheap. Like everything.
We'll have Ben look at it.
Like everything, everything seems to be coming in a lot higher.
But we're going to natural gas from a different energy source?
Right, from electric to natural gas.
Yeah, so we're increasing efficiency, so in time, we're recouping some.
Right.
And it keeps our water from freezing.
Yeah.
At its source.
I'd be interested to hear in more detail.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely. Oh, and did everybody see the signs coming in? City Hall signs?
I was.
The door, the door decals.
The decals, and if you go back out, there's a sign on the corner now, a big four-foot sign.
And on both sides of the building.
Does the corner light, light up?
It's going to when we get the electrician to plug it in.
So there's little arrows, you know, that go from around the face on the corner and it's sitting out.
They can find a sense of surprising.
50%.
Nobody else?
Yes. Downtown Association helped us with those signs, too.
Yes.
50%.
So we'll hear more about that. Now we'll hear from our city planner, Lucy Temple.
Hi. Honorable mayor and council, I am not going to give you a report tonight unless you have questions for me, because I'm going to take up a significant amount of your time at the next meeting with delivering the 2019 to 2037 comprehensive plan.
So you're not, you're not going to tell us anything about sidewalk three?
Well, we're going to have, I'm on the agenda later, but not for a regular staff report under officer reports. I don't have anything, unless you have any questions.
We'll plan a little longer to.
It depends on what else is on the agenda.
She's saving up at the time.
Expect a presentation. A glorious presentation.
You can talk about your new efficiencies and searching capabilities.
Okay.
Oh, I heard about that.
Councilman Harper gave me some tips on, some computer stuff that's going to help me in the future.
There you go.
Yeah.
So now we'll hear from our police chief, Kirk Bland.
Thank you, mayor, council. For those who don't know me, I'm Kirk Bland. Been here for a while, but not in this position anyway, so I'm happy to report that the chief is doing very well. Got to speak, Cheryl got to speak to him today, and recovery is on schedule, and he's actually better than the last surgery, so, so things are doing well for him. My understanding, he was here at the last May 28 meeting, so I'm just going to update some of the stuff we've done since that date. Still moving forward with the corporal's position. The process for promoting a corporal position will happen in mid-July, and appears that we're going to have five officers apply for that, which is outstanding. We surplus a bunch of old vehicles that have been laying around, so those are cleaned up and out of our way. We were able to use some parts off of them, so they weren't totally scrapped, and that's later in tonight's agenda for the surplus. I'll be addressing that. We've applied for a grant for some defensive tactic gear, and that's through the local law justice grant that we apply for every year. We usually have to use that money to get MDCs, the old computers in our cars. However, we were able to upgrade our system. We've got computers in every car now that are functional, so we're able to use that money towards something else. So based on that, we do have two officers scheduled for defensive tactics training, so they can be instructors for the entire department. The city of Clayown utilizes the city of Ellensburg, their police department, they do an in-service training program every year. I'm sure Chief Ferguson has talked about that in the past, and with us providing some instructors, we'll, we'll be able to help with that more as well, instead of just sending me as a firearms instructor to assist. So we'll actually be able to assist in the training, instead of just receiving all the training. More training, I just got back from an AR-15 armorer's course. Our iPhones have been upgraded for free. Our old iPhones that we've had issued on patrol were getting pretty beat up, some non-functional. Verizon upgraded to the next level up for free, which sounds great, but they're just sevens. They're not, they're not those kind of, but we're happy with them, so. I'm sure the chief talked about the arson burglary case that we had, it was fairly unique last, I don't know, don't remember that? Okay, so back on the 28th.
They have to leave the meeting early to go deal with that.
Okay, so we had a burglary turn out to be an arson, so that, that case is still under investigation. Part of that investigation, I'm a certified fire inspector, so they called me out to do that, determined arson, therefore, I was able to call the fire marshal, and I learned that he actually has an accelerant detection dog. So the fire marshals came up to assist in that, ran the dog through, which led to a search warrant and evidence collection, et cetera. So pretty exciting to see that our county has an accelerant detection dog, a good resource that we're, we're able to use. The whole department came up and did the scholarship ceremony for the high school. We always provide a scholarship in memoriam for fallen police officer, Officer Bill Ralsick. He was a Clayown police officer back in the 70s and 80s. And this year, with the tragic incident that we experienced with losing a county deputy this year, and a Kitahas officer being shot, that was much more meaningful for us, the scholarship. So instead of giving out two scholarships this year, we gave out three. And instead of just a lone presenter presenting the scholarship, the entire department showed. And it was very well received, so I was glad we were able to do that. And finally, we're looking into some grants again. So this grant that we're specifically looking into is going to be dealing with building security for, specifically the police department. So hopefully, I'll have some more information on the next meeting, on how that's progressing. That's all I have.
So Mike, usually you're ahead of him, but when I was doodling here, I.
Correct you out.
Well, I'd be honest, that's all right. I was still trying to figure out why we need all the heater systems with Willie's warm heart up there. The water shouldn't be even on.
Anyway, honorable mayor, council members, I'm glad to report that our I worked program is working phenomenally. Just since the last meeting, we've gotten over 28 inquiries on it. Everything from water turnoffs, water turn-ons, sewer fumes, sewer backups, water leaks, signs are down, and of course, the infamous potholes. The crews are out repairing potholes as we speak. We've got a few roads and avenues that we're focusing on due to the chip seal schedule. We're working with the county. They're working on a few avenues here in town that I'm going to get a schedule out as soon as I get it from them, so that we can notify everybody as early as we can of the chip seal schedule. We're planning on minimal impacts, county's planning on starting early, 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 early in the mornings to try to get out of the way before the business is open, and give the tack an opportunity to dry beforehand. Another big issue we're still running into is the water meters. So just to give you guys a heads up, we are working on an RFP to hopefully, down the road, replace all these water meters that we're having all these issues with. So just a heads up that that's coming soon to a council meeting near you.
Well, aren't there, you know, we're like 250 now.
Yeah.
I mean, they're dropping like.
And every week, there's more and more and more, and we just can't seem to get a handle on them, and with these on a daily basis as well, we're kind of at a breaking point where we don't have a choice but to start looking at an alternative.
So to be clear, the meters are reading correctly, but they're not able to be remotely calibrated?
So the batteries are fast. Good clarification.
So we're working.
Any questions?
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of the council, members of the viewing audience. I provided the usual graphs for you. Nothing startling in there. The warmer weather coming at us, our flows are going up. Currently, we're running a little over 2 million gallons today. Maybe they're running well with the water plant, no issues, no problems. I don't know what else to say about that. Appreciate Rob getting the, going after the grant for that, and we'll see how it bands up. Really looking forward to having some kind of heat up there in the winter. At the wastewater plant, the only other thing we have going there is we have one basin offline. This time of year, our flows are not high enough to sustain two basins, so we have one drain down now. Once we have it drained, we'll get in and physically clean it and do inspections on all the equipment. We're kind of in that transition period right now where the water level's down enough, the heat is high enough that there may be a little bit of an odor emanating from the plant, but we're scheduled to get in there, get it drained the rest of this week, and start cleaning it next week. Happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
I love these graphs, I'm grateful I can. And so precept this year is a little down from 2018, and wastewater flows are similar to down. So is that basically less runoff equals less infiltration, I and I?
For the most part, that's correct, I guess.
Probably just a direct consequence. And that's to tighten up those pipes that will come down.
Okay.
Thank you.
The night you brought that up again, I'll add to Mike's credit here. They've had some real good use of the camera truck, and they were able to avoid a couple of really interesting problems in their surveys, and also help some of the other communities. And it's been real handy, yeah. If you want, you can meet with them later, he'll show you pictures on his phone. Yeah, speaking of which, no TV today. Okay. Okay, so that's it for officer reports. Now we're down to citizen comments on non-agenda items. Is there someone who wish to address the council? No? All right, your chance. You could just say huzzah. Well, you have to give us your name and your address. That's all right. I'm just kidding. So no public appearances, no business appearing, so we're down to new business, number 10. So the first one, we'll hear from Lucy Temple about sidewalk sales and service.
Thank you.
Ordinance.
Yes, this is a repeal and replacement of Clayown Municipal Code 1790 related to sidewalk sales and service of food and beverages. It provides a mechanism to permit food cart, sidewalk cafes, and other sales of merchandise in a more thorough manner, and allowing more than seven days in a calendar year, which is what the current code allows. So all those sidewalk cafes or anything happening on our sidewalks, according to this code, were only allowed for seven days, and then they were no longer allowed. So this goes along with our plan to revitalize the downtown and invite merchants to present their wares or their food and beverage out onto the sidewalk, and it allows for more flexibility in using those, those areas. The planning commission vetted this thoroughly, and this is their recommendation that I'm presenting to you. And they, they've gone through it, they've proposed the changes, it's been vetted through legal, and when you look, and we did have a hearing on June 4th with no comments received. If you look through the packet in the back, past the ordinance, is the sidewalk use permit form that someone would fill out, and the requirements that they would need to present, or the attachments that you need to present. And then, and the last page, well, the second to the last page, the last piece of paper, it shows some example arrangements on the sidewalk for, like cafes. So it generally provides for idiot access while using the sidewalk areas, making sure that there is enough clearance, making sure that things like umbrellas or tables are properly weighted so that it's safe. In the very last sheet, it will require a whole harmless agreement for the city, and I believe also proper proof of insurance for having that sidewalk sales. So.
Thanks for putting the wind firm clause.
Wind firm, yes. We don't want anything blowing over. I think that a lot of times people underestimate the amount of weight that's on it, and I just recently discovered that for market booths, like for the Rosan Market or the Ellensburg Market, it used to be 25 pounds per leg of a standard 10 by 10 booth, but if you look at manufacturer recommendations, it's 40 pounds per leg. And so, you know, we saw a couple years ago at Snow Fest that the tents got, they didn't necessarily blow away, but they got mangled. So it's very, very important to make sure that anything on our, on our sidewalks, which is like a wind tunnel down First Street, are properly heated. So with that, the planning commission does recommend adoption of Ordinance 1558, sidewalk sales ordinance, as presented. So if anyone had any questions, again, we did not need a hearing.
It's been through the planning commission?
Absolutely.
It makes, it makes for more vibrant downtown. You know, because we want to do it now, if the rules are, even the application, even the applications here, pretty clear.
And at this time, I will clarify, at this time, there is no precept. That is something that we need to discuss. This is, since people already kind of have their sidewalk cafes out this year, if there were additional, then we would put them through this. Those that are already out there, we will provide the information to them, and then start afresh in 2020, at which time we would have a precept, and we'd amend the fee schedule by resolution.
You have a question?
Oh, I just personally express that I do appreciate the controls and protections put in concerning specifically the sale and use of alcohol in these venues. At the same time, a lot of heartburn about, you know, having this, you know, basically the ability of public intoxication, you know, or the potential for it that this brings. At the same time, if we don't do anything, then we don't have, you know, the economic benefit of the sidewalk sales, and it incredibly curtails, you know, the businesses just to be able to operate freely. So my support, my support is that for this is in that, in its entirety, it does a lot to protect us from the eventualities that could happen of that. It does protect, it does, it does put a lot of protections and controls. At the same time, I think I would be remiss in not mentioning that it does open up, it does open up, you know, the sale and use of alcohol on our city streets, and I just think that that should be written to the record.
Let's, let's very appreciate that. Any other questions? People, someone feel like making a motion, maybe?
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 1558.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to adopt ordinance, and where did you find that number?
I don't even know that.
Oh, yeah. Right there, too. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. The 1558.
And the top of that.
Top of that, yes, okay. All right. Questions on that motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Goes? So now the, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to pull the emergency declaration?
Oh.
I think we've got one more.
I had a B.
Oh, oh, that's right. See, I'm way.
Are you doodling?
Okay, so we are going to go through the surplus vehicle process here. I think he's already somewhat explained the issues. Do you have any questions that Chris pulled to this?
While I understand that any of these are, I know these aren't serviceable as police vehicles, are any of these mobile that could be used for any other benefit to the city?
Did Mike and Inon say to drive, and they've been driven to, into the ground, therefore, why don't you read them?
But I think that Mike will put a couple of them on the surplus site.
Oh, for sure, yeah, we want to get the most.
Two of them, two of them for sure will get scrapped out, but the other, two of the others Michael put on.
No, I know at one time, we had talked about having a service car for pilots at the airport, but it sounded like none of these would be a good candidate.
Yeah, we, we use them too much. We use them to the end of limits.
Any other questions? Are there any concerns about the surplusing of these vehicles?
Move that we adopt Resolution 2019-9, providing for the disposal of these vehicles.
Moved and seconded to accept Resolution 2019-009, the surplusing of these vehicles. Questions on the motion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Goes? Now. So we've decided, do you want to, do you want to, Ben has, wants to address this concern?
All right, honorable mayor, council, thank you. Ben Anan with HLA Engineering. I don't see it in the council packets, so I'll go ahead and read the letter from Kitahas County Solid Waste Programs, from the director, Patty Johnson. This is what led to the potential emergency declaration. Dear Mr. Olmans, the upper county transfer station was opened in 2003 and has been running off of the original well which has supplied water to the system. The system supplies domestic water to the scale house and the tipping floor. We are experiencing frequent failures with the system, which is starting to impact our employees, and will start to impact our service to the public if not connected. At this time, I would request that the city of Clayown declare an emergency and allow the water line extension to continue to the upper county transfer station. We have been anticipating the extension of city water to the site in future, but with the existing system failing, it is becoming crucial to make the connection to the system sooner. By allowing the transfer station to connect to the system, it would also allow us to activate the fire hydrants on the property, which were installed during the original construction of the transfer station, with the anticipation of connecting to the city water system in the future. With the predicted high fire hazards this year, it would be an additional line of defense for the facility and the surrounding area. Again, I'd like to request that the city of Clayown declare an emergency so we can move swiftly in the extension of the water line to the upper county transfer station, considering Patty Johnson. So since, as a, as a next step to that, a draft of a resolution was drafted, is included in the council packets, this was also supplied to the city attorney, which commented on the proposal as well, and there was some reservation from the city attorney, that the emergency that was declared isn't life threatening, in that it would be not, it wouldn't be that they couldn't defend it, but it could be difficult to defend if, if there was a request to, to look into it a bit further. And so looking at that, discussing it with both city staff, the ordinance was written, the resolution was written, but there was not a recommendation to move forward with it. There's also in the works, the Kitahas County shop. There's also in the works, the Kidattas County shop expansion is also in the general vicinity of this project as well. As part of that project, there's a sewer extension, which is approximately a parallel pipe. It's 12 feet off center from the water main. And so realistically, we've got a couple of different projects happening that could happen under one project. By declaring an emergency, it's really applicable to the water, but you could, you could move forward with the sewer as well. It's just, there's not a sewer emergency at the, at the transfer station. It's a water emergency. Those fire hydrants that are currently in place are dry and ill at this point. And so the immediate emergency is for the water system, but ultimately the water extension and sewer extension to the transfer station would serve the shop as well.
So we're not going to do it right now, right?
It's something I guess the council could discuss.
I'd like to publicly address some things here.
Yeah. So it seems, as he's mentioned, somewhat self-serving of the county. And the county has declared no emergency in this area themselves. And my understanding is this is thing to come where these things are located, correct? I think they declared no emergency.
UCA, but not in the city of Ole Miss, correct?
So it's within the county's jurisdiction to declare an emergency there. We could certainly respond to their declaration on the emergency and it would be able to fulfill all this. I'm just asking, would it be able to fulfill all the same things? If they declared an emergency there, then we could respond in, in the same way of providing water? Or would we need to also declare an emergency because of this event?
With it being city utilities, it would probably be a quasi jurisdictional to where it'd be the county and the city working together on that emergency. But you might be correct in that initial emergency would be declared by the county.
Well, I guess there's just some, there's some issues is, you know, we've asked county, play ball with us, you know, listen to us, you know, develop this in a, in a different way and don't listen to us. Then they come crying saying, we need your help here. And again, it is, it is a valid concern that if this is a threat to our city, we certainly need to not ignore it. And we don't, and, and the overriding benefit of keeping our city from going on fire, would obviously we wouldn't, we're not going to, because of sour grapes, deny them water. But at the same time, I think we need to have a very candid conversation with the county. Like it would have been nice to have a representative from the county coming here. We have no issues, you know, the Kidattas County Solid Waste has served us well. There's not, there's not, there's no issue with, no bad feelings with them. But I believe certainly our, the citizens of our city have some ill will and certainly the neighboring communities with the county in this particular area. And for us to, to jump the gun, I'd like to see them, them first declare an emergency and then we can respond. I think that would be what I would recommend to this council.
Okay, I'll go so far as to say, the transfer station was expanded in, what, '02, '03 there about?
Every bit of 17 years, you know, at the same time.
But then it was there for decades prior to that, you know, smaller footprint. This hasn't, this well's been here for a long time. And this, this hasn't just happened yesterday. So I don't see how it could be considered an emergency.
From the wells, yeah. The hydrants have been dry for a long time.
Well, if this is the first we, we've heard about it, but we've lived with it for decades.
I always talk about the well, the problem right now is that the wells are failing.
I understand that, but that doesn't happen overnight. And even if they completely fail, you can truck tanks of water.
I would, I know you can, and I wouldn't make that argument. We would, we would always want to do whatever we could to facilitate the ease of putting out a fire for firemen. We don't ever want to jeopardize their life when we could have made it easier.
I disagree. I disagree completely. I think that's a real exaggeration and I don't buy it. And we've got estimates of three quarters of a million dollars to do work. And where, okay, the city does it and they get paid, but we're seeing some overruns in estimates. So, you know, it might be well over a million dollars. So it's just, it's just two groups. This is not a tight proposal. And, and the other thing is, as a city, we cannot approve an extension, essentially an annexation, without getting a water act and having it in hand. So we've got to have that in hand. There's just no way until we have a water act, you know.
Okay, so John?
I just want to kind of duck tail off of both of you two and just, it's not an emergency for us until it's an emergency for them and then we can consider. So, yeah, I, I don't think that we should declare the emergency until, you know, we shouldn't consider declaring an emergency until they have declared. I think it's as simple as that. Like I say, it's not, right now, it's not an emergency for us. It's not even in our jurisdiction, right? So with everything else that's been said, I think we should just have to rely until.
Yeah, can I respond? Let, let me give you a chance for C has an interesting thought.
I think you all like it for that because they can go get another well right and put another well in. Why should, why should they declare an emergency and put us in for a billion dollars when they don't want to spend nine or 10,000, you know?
Well, first of all, you realize we won't be spending that money.
Well, I understand that, but it's still going to go through.
Yeah, sure.
I just, I just don't agree with them. They can fix, they can repair their problem, is what I'm saying.
Sure. Well, that's why we're discussing it.
I am more than happy to extend our water system to the county as it was planned. And obviously, since they have other facilities that are not being supplied with water at this point that are on the site, I just disagree that it's an emergency. Saying that fire season is a reason for, to declare the emergency, I think is a smokescreen because there's been fire disasters for years without the hydrants being supplied. So I'm more than happy to do this, I just don't think it's emergency.
We're being, yeah.
Because with their wells, they've not had the hydrants supplied with water, so.
Yeah, for sure.
So it's not an emergency, in my opinion. And I would like to be able to save the money if we can dig a ditch once for both lines rather than do, dig one and then dig another one at the same time, at a different time.
They do have to have separation to health standards.
Right, yeah.
But if you have a machine there, digging one ditch is just for the other.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
Okay, well then, so we're fine. We were going, we're having this debate in that other room. Is this the way to do that? And so, so we can put it aside and we'll see what other have you come to see.
My only other question is, it says that, it said here specifically, and I would like to obviously address the county which isn't here, but is experiencing frequent failures and is impacting employees and the public. And to what extent, I mean, I'd like to know. I mean, can they not wash their hands? Can they not hose off, you know, hazardous material? Like how, is this, is this an environmental or is this a health concern that, that we need to refer to, to greater authority? I'd just like to know how wide, what is this, this frequent problems with the water causing? It would be nice to know transparently, you know, is this affecting the health of our neighbors? Because they are our neighbors and we don't want to turn a blind eye to that. But it may be able to be mitigated better ways, you know? But we'd like, I'd like to be apprised of what health concerns it might be bringing up, you know, if, if any.
Real good comments, it's great. So, so with that, we'll put it aside and we'll move on to the next one, Ben.
And that is a word of contract of.
It's the interlocal agreement is next.
Interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement.
Certainly related to the last item, there are, on the back of the interlocal agreement there.
The interlocal agreement is dependent on the emergency declaration, I think?
Yes and no, it's, it's a matter of timing.
So without the emergency, the project will just move on, but just slower. That's the idea.
Yeah, declaring an emergency, it would allow a contractor that's close by and as everybody knows, there's some work going on close to this site as it is with advantaged dirt contractors, the Clayellum Pines West site. And so if they would be available to do the work, you could contract immediately with that contractor that's already mobilized, close by on site, and enter into a contract without going through the public bidding process, which generally adds four weeks on the project. And so you'd be looking at starting construction in three weeks versus potentially seven weeks if you did a traditional bidding process, which after tabling the emergency declaration, that's likely the route that would be taken.
Cost to the city doesn't change because they're paying for this, correct?
Correct, correct. And that's this interlocal agreement. So that's between Kidattas County and the City of Clayellum. It's for the five schedules of work that are listed on Exhibit 1. Schedule A is a Miller Avenue 903 sewer extension. It's essentially 400 feet of sewer that would take burden off of older sections of sewer that aren't performing in the fashion that they should be. Schedule B, number 5 Mine Road and Sewer Extension, that would be extending the sewer up to the transfer station and the Kidattas County shop. Schedule C is the same but for water. Schedule D is, is a PRV station, a pressure reducing valve station that would connect Pressure Zones 2 and Pressure Zones 3, adding reliability to the water system. And then finally, the Schedule E would be for that water connection to the transfer station. So in total, the estimate is $720,000 is listed there. And this interlocal agreement would be penny for penny reimbursement from Kidattas County to the city.
And FYI, we just received yesterday, this interlocal back, signed by the Board of County Commissioners, they're all signed now, they met yesterday.
What are you expecting to do on the Miller Avenue and 903 extension?
Just not in your package.
I can answer that. You know, Miller Avenue, your, your development, all Pattonese element ties in to the eight inch tile that goes down the alley between Roslin Place and Second Street. And that is not big enough. And so they have to extend that from.
From the manhole, the Miller Avenue, down the alley between, between Second and.
Yes, it turns right there. So this extension would extend it out to Second and connect into the main transmission line that's in there.
And we do away with one of it down the alley?
Yeah, well, the alley will still be there, but all of your neighborhood and all of Pattonese construction would not be going down that eight inch tile pipe. Oh, and that's what that extension is.
How's it looking in the camera down that one?
I've got to that one, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But that, but that is one that they watch on a weekly basis. Sam Traurico's manhole. And when it's full, it comes out, shoots out of there about like this.
So we have the main two footer in Second Street then, right? The big one?
Oh, the, um, yes, yes, correct, yes.
Can I ask a quick, quick question, Mayor? So this means that anything on the north side of 90, or the Denny, or the Roslin Place cul-de-sac, pretty much anything west of Miller Ave from that cul-de-sac, including Denny Avenue, Marion Drive, and then all of the new Clayellum Pines West extension development properties that are being built and are still yet to come, plus the transfer station and the county shop would be transferred from going into the old pipe into a new system.
Yes.
Because it can't take any more strain. So geographically, it's.
And we have the development pay for that.
That, that's, well, that's what we're working on, let me tell you. And in some ways, that should have been done a long time ago, yeah. And this is, you're absolutely right. And it's been a high priority to get that changed.
There's a plug there, there's a little plug in my house.
Yeah, no, it plugs down the house downstream a little sooner than.
No, up on top.
Well, actually, the plug's down around the bottom, maybe you go.
So at the bottom, no, I know that, but then we have a problem with this house.
That's right, that's the same pipe then. Okay, question?
And this may sound very simple in understanding this. So we've, so we've decided, we've said, we're not going to declare an emergency right now. So we can't, so we're not going to fast path. All the emergency do, all the emergency would do is fast path their ability to be able to do this work. Emergency does not allow or deny them the ability to be able to do this work. Our interlocal agreement does. And if we don't agree to this, then portions of our citizenry are affected by this. So one way or another, we have to, we have to build a road to these places outside of our city limits, you know, a water road, so to say. Would you, would that be correct?
Extending utilities.
That would be correct, yeah.
So.
Right.
Where's the?
So in effect, I, so in, so I just want to make sure that I'm not oversimplifying it. But basically, while we may be against it on principle, we're, we're going to cost the county more money by not declaring the emergency or we're just delaying the process.
Delaying is, yeah, confirming delaying for sure. When it comes to the pricing, it's, it's hard to say who the contractor that's nearby would even agree to do it and then at what price? When you competitively bid it, it could go one of two ways as well. And the current bidding climate certainly isn't favorable to any jurisdiction. So there is a potential that it could cost more by bidding it outright because that contractor could potentially move on to other projects or mobilize to another site in the interim. Because you're looking at about a four week, four to five week difference there from one process to the next.
I think that's something we need to consider as much as we are against the emergency declaration.
It's a, I'm sorry, am I interrupting?
No, no.
The PRV valve you're asking about.
Okay, change the subject. Where's, where's the pressure reducing valve still?
Almost right at the water treatment plant, but on the north side of 903. Dragging Zone 3 and transitions to Zone 2.
And that loops the new development that you're on with that, that line because the other ones is another zone. All the new houses are on Zone 2, it needs a PRV. The other stuff's on a Zone 3. So it does loop the water main through that whole neighborhood.
Well, that, that's good.
You know, there's that as benefit. You know, we're, we're not, it's not, it's actually for the city's benefit in a lot of ways to do this project. And, and I guess the idea is that there is a contractor there and if we can take advantage of the fact that he is mobilized, then the price will, it's a little quicker and the price might be a little bit.
And ultimately, this is county money. So the county's pretty flush to have.
That's, I, hey, I guess so.
Just spend on this. I'm surprised.
I am surprised too.
And basically, we're talking about cutting a deal with the outfits that's there versus a few more weeks to bid it out.
Exactly.
And anytime you bid something in the spring, especially when there's a lot of work going already and everybody's got their schedule filled up, you've got to pay through the nose. And if you sole source a project, which is what you do with the guy that's there, you're asking for very high prices too. I would argue that we should wait until the fall and do it next year. Be responsible, but I guess if we're spending somebody else's money, it doesn't matter. But if we want to be careful about it, this should be a 2025.
Keep in mind too that, that we will have our, our engineer out there making sure that they're, you know, so paying through the nose for.
Well, the prices are fixed by the schedule by, I have a time.
If it's way above the engineer's estimate, I don't know, you know, if the county would want to do that.
Was this just going to be a timing equipment or Schedule 11?
If it's declared an emergency, it would be timing materials and labor. So it'd be very heavy on the admin, the tracking side, just because of tracking hours, labor, certified payrolls.
Okay, well, that's my concern. It's not our money, I guess I'm okay with it. It's not our money, I guess I'm okay with it if somebody wants to. I'm not going to make a motion for it.
No, that's all right. No, it's all right. No, it's a serious...
You mean you don't stand in, you don't stand in support of revisiting?
Well, I think it's a good project. Wow, I like this.
There is benefits to the city.
Right, Mike. So you're not, so to be clear, you don't want to motion your support of the interlocal agreement? Is that what you're saying?
Or the emergency?
Well, I just want to make sure you're not making a statement concerning...
I'm just saying, it's not an emergency. As an interlocal agreement, I suppose it can work, and especially if the county has committed their resources to pay for it, that's very nice of you.
And we expect...
And, and, so you're putting on benefits by them spending this money. Well, and the extension, too. It's all beneficial to the city.
I would move that we adopt the interlocal agreement as it's been presented here.
Is there a second?
Take a second.
One second.
Move a second to approve the interlocal agreement for the extension utilities. Questions on the motion? Not all in favor with aye?
Aye.
One? Aye. Is there any, and those opposed?
Aye.
So, to be clear, I am for the admin.
I am for it.
So it's three to you guys?
Three to two. I'm for the motion.
Yes.
Three to two. It's three to two, so without a majority of us present, it doesn't pass.
What?
Three to two.
Three to two is a, yeah, three to close the clerkhouse.
Aye, that's right. I'm thinking, I have four. Wow, am I out of it? Okay, so, all right, we do that. Now, is there, how, where does that leave you, Ben, with this project? Do we...
So...
Do we proceed...
You said you received a signed copy from the county?
Yeah, we got that, we'll have that.
The county has, excuse me, extended signatures.
So the city would sign it, return it to the county, and then at that point, since the emergency would not be declared, we'd coordinate with Kidattas County on developing a bid schedule, producing the bid documents, and then a traditional competitive bidding process.
There you go. Okay. Wow, can't believe it, I can't count it. Okay, all right, all right. So then the interlocal agreement goes. Now, now we're down E, the work contracted, the destruction in the First Street Stormwater intersection improvements, and then, you know, the floor again.
All right, so we just spoke briefly about timing and construction and contractor bids, and recently, we had a bid opening on May 30th of this year for the First Street Stormwater and Billings Avenue Intersection Improvements project. Three bids were received, the low being DJB Construction out of Wenatchee. Also had a bid from DW Excavating out of Davenport and Bell Sauce out of Allenberg. The low was approximately 51% higher than the engineer's estimate of $1,046,879. So the low bid total was $1,581,615, substantially higher than was anticipated. And reviewed the bids, the bids checked out, there were no errors, and from there, we started making phone calls to state and federal funding agencies. Are there any other grants available? First call was to CDBG program through Department of Commerce, and Department of Commerce actually granted $25,000 additional grant money to the project after, it was a two-page grant application that was completed for that project. It certainly helps, but it's a very large delta there. The next step was a phone call to the Transportation Improvement Board. And the city's got a $400,000 Complete Streets grant, 150 of it was earmarked for this project, $250,000 for another project. And conversation with TIB was, could all of that $400,000 be utilized for this project to make a dent into the delta there? And the immediate response was pretty positive. They talked it over collectively through the TIB group and came back with, the projects both still need to happen, but you can utilize all of the $400,000 for this project. And so essentially, it defers that future obligation to the future and can move that money into the project in today's dollars. And so essentially, $250,000 was moved from a future obligation to this current project. Another phone call was made to USDA, what kind of funding opportunities might they have for this project? USDA is primarily a loan-based funding agency. The terms were approximately 3.5% interest, 20 to a 30-year note. Discussed those terms with City Treasurer, Robin. She made some phone calls to some local banks, and some similar financing terms were made available. And rather than going through the application process and the annual reporting that's required with USDA funds, the treasurer said, you know, "We should probably move forward with private financing if we want to take a loan out for the balance of this project." Additionally, I made some phone calls to the contractor, the low bidder, and so there's a couple items on here that were really alarming to me, one of them being traffic control. We made provisions for allowing closures, and the bid still is at $170,000 for traffic control. When I discussed the closures and some of the logistics with the contractor, he said if the work was done at night hours, you could shave off $100,000 off of that line item. And discussing that with the state as a possibility, and with city staff, and both in concept agreed to, for $100,000 and less impact to our businesses on a day-to-day basis, it seems like a no-brainer. But these are just things in concept, we were talking about, obviously, no agreements have been made, no change orders have been proposed, but in concept, is that something that if the project were to be awarded, could a deductive change order be put in place to reflect that $100,000 savings? And the answer was yes. Now, another item, too, and it's a little bit smaller scale, but the second one there, ADA feature surveying. Being that this is a state route, DOT requires every single curb ramp to be measured, both the slopes, the dimensions of the ramp, the landing areas, the wings, and worksheets completed by the contractor certifying that they meet all ADA compliance. And we estimated that at $3,000, which could be done by a pipe layer, by anybody on a crew, it's taking measurements of the tape measure in a smart level. Well, the bidder had procured a licensed surveyor to do that work instead. Huge delta with a licensed surveyor versus anybody taking those measurements. And so, asked the contractor, if the inspector on the project were to do those measurements instead, could we delete that line item from the project? And the answer was yes. And so by having those conversations, potentially shaving off $120,000 of the project cost, it gets it down to, you know, a delta of about $400,000 by the time you add in the CDBG grant. If you did take the TIB 250 grand, now that delta's only $150,000. And so a couple of things to entertain is, there's about a $400,000 difference between what's funded with all the grants and what the bid is at this time. Is $400,000 something the city would want to take on debt for? A loan, whether it's through a private bank or through USDA? Or would you like to potentially use the TIB funds, all 400 towards this project, and have a difference there of 150 grand that you could come up with, whether it's private financing or through a REIT fund or another mechanism? So up for discussion, yes, go ahead.
What was the other, what project was the $220,000 of the TIB?
Good question, sorry about that. So the north block from Billings to Oaks here. So essentially, that First Street revitalization concept, but just the north block here.
So we take care of this project, but we lose funds for the revitalization?
But we still have to build that.
But we're still responsible to build that.
Exactly.
Potentially.
So we pay, we could use the money now, or we could save the money for later, for a project? We have to do all this.
We have to do it anyway.
We're going to have to come up with a loan regardless, sounds like.
Plus, the loan would be for how much? The 150 area?
If you still had, if you're still required to build this north side, it would be for 400 in total. And TIB has not made a decision yet as if they would still require the city to build a north side, what was originally approved in the work plan for the complete streets.
The three other line items that I have a general curiosity about is the tree removal and structures being about triple and about sixfold or double on the, you know, on the other people. Why that was, why there was such a disparity in that line item? Any ideas?
Yeah, good question. I did ask the same question to the contractor, and it depends where contractors are putting their profit. Saw cutting was a big one that this contractor decided to put in, the removal of structures and obstructions. There's a pretty substantial saw cutting involved with the roadway section that exists on First Street. It's anywhere from six to eight inches of asphalt, over 10 to 14 inches of concrete, so pretty substantial saw cutting effort.
The other question I had was on the cement, concrete, traffic, curb, and gutter. There also seems to be a large disparity in all the bidders from the estimate on that, some as much as almost three times and some about double. Was there a mitigating factor that was causing that?
That could be due to a number of things. One of those is, this project has a 5% DVE requirement, so disadvantaged business enterprise requirement. This contractor specifically stated that the bid received from his DVD contractor was approximately 30% higher. It's still not the difference there, but that was a contributing factor. And then on top of it, with the confined limits of the construction, they generally won't be able to come in with a curb machine, which you can do more efficiently. All these will have to be hand-formed. But still, it's, in 10 bid openings this year, we haven't seen a number even close to the 45 to 68 range, which we saw here. Highest I've seen curb and gutter so far this year is $40 a foot.
And then the smallest, smallest different, you know, big difference would be in the tree lighting system. Was that just a, an oddity of our project also, or it was about doubled on all their estimates?
Yeah, so that one, again, was really a surprise. There's seven receptacles that would be installed as part of the trees, the street trees. Each one of those would have a liquid type dual receptacle at the top of the tree for Christmas lights or whatever else you would like to utilize those for. But seven receptacles, granted, that did include a new power service as well behind the alley here, but electricians are very busy currently, too. They, in fact, most of contractors call and say, "Do you have any electrician recommendations?" Everybody we're calling says, "We can't help you out, we're too busy." So part of this bid is in total is, I think, a sign of the times as well. Contractors that are building subdivisions, a lot of private development is occurring, and in the last couple of years, that's been guaranteed money versus years past, going into recessions, you're more prone to work for municipalities, government entities, because it is guaranteed payment. Developments, it's not. So a lot of contractors are going that way.
So the next question is, if we were, is there any advantage to us delaying a month or two or three, or does that, do we, do we risk losing the funding, or what would be the...
Good question, because that's one of the things we discussed, too, internally with staff, was do you rebid the project in the fall for March 1st construction of next year? That's an option, there's no guarantee, it might not be another 20, 30% premium. Funding is not at risk here. You've got until 2020 for CDBG funds to be expanded, and you've got until 2021 for the TIB Complete Streets. The county .09 money needs to be spent down by the end of 2020 as well. So that would be, there's just, there's also a risk in doing that, too, that it could be even higher yet, which is hard to fathom, but it's certainly the case with some of the bids we've been seeing lately. I would say that would be where I would be coming in.
I favor October, November rebidding.
I, I just, 51% for premium on it just seems way out of whack. And I know that you're not the bidder, but, you know, it just doesn't seem right, and I can't get past it.
Keep in mind, we did have three bidders, and they weren't all too far out.
I understand that, but 51%, really, something went wrong either on the original bidding or with the people that did it. But that is a big number.
To put things into perspective, too, if we look at Phase One, the First NPO project, if we use those bid prices and apply those to all of the bid items and quantities on this, it comes out to right at about $1,500,000, which is where the estimate was at. And so that's what was interesting, too, because immediately, your mind goes there thinking, you know, what was missed in this? And so you apply some of those prices. Granted, that was last fall when that project was bid, but you put those bid prices to the quantities on this project, and essentially, it says it should be about a 1 million, 1.1 million dollar project. And yet, all three bids are in that 1.5, 1.6 range. And so is it just truly a sign of the times, and is it going to continue to get worse?
Well, Ben, how about the fact that that last one was just an intersection? They are going to be cutting and going down. Is that, you know, it's not just this new intersection we're doing, there is a pipe that's going to be laid.
True.
And that's where the nighttime work could reduce some of it, but that, that's kind of a little bit different aspect, don't you think?
It is, and that should affect it in a positive fashion, because it's economy of scale. You've got more quantity, you've got, you should have more interest from other contractors because it is a larger project. There's potentially more profit to be made by contractors. And to only have three, I mean, we had eight prime contractors on the plan holders list, but only three turned out with bids. That's also a sign that...
I think it's a sign of the season.
They always have a sign of the time.
That could be the case, too.
I'm more comfortable, if the money can be here for a rebid, I don't think it could be more. I think it's highly likely that it would be less if we rebid it in the fall. And I'm more comfortable with that than borrowing the money, quite frankly.
Agreed.
Borrowing money and then we're stealing from a project. So it isn't just one thing.
Well, I make a motion that we reject the bids at this time and rebid it in the fall.
I'll second that.
Moving a second to reject the bid and rebid it in the fall. Questions on the motion? Not? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I've got a committee report.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm just catching my breath. A lot of work went into this, you guys. You know, a lot of work.
A lot of money, too.
Yeah, it's half a million dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Can I just make a statement that I would like to thank HLA and Ben in particular for seeing these bids come in. It was a huge shock and running with several alternative plans to present to the city. This amazing amount of dedication to see this project through, and I really personally appreciate you, Ben, and what you put into making all those changes happen. And we're really lucky to have you doing the work for us.
Push forward with hopefully better bids in the fall.
So I'm going to challenge the council that we rebid it, but we need to do this project.
Yes, we do.
No, no, we're not. I don't think anybody said we don't need to do this project. It's just that it's the money thing, isn't it?
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
Out of whack.
Okay. Committee reports?
Yes, the cemetery committee met, and we have a grant opportunity, but it's going to cost a little money. And our committee recommends that we enter into agreement with HLA. This agreement would be with the intent that HLA write a grant for the Historic Cemetery Preservation Capital Grant Program, a grant by the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. We further recommend that the fee of approximately 2,500 be paid by applying to our own city's LTAC. And secondarily, if that process is not successful, that funds be directed from the general account as a line item transfer one time. The goal of this, from the general. The goal of this grant would be to secure about 25,000 to 50,000 toward repairs and preservation of the cemetery as a priority on the irrigation system repairs and updates. The committee understands that the grant is not guaranteed to be awarded, but judges in good faith that it is a worthy risk. The committee understands that the grant is not guaranteed to be awarded, but judges in good faith that it is a worthy risk, and we have many factors going in our favor, among them, the age of our cemetery, uh, the fact that we have not applied in previous years uh, for these types of grants, that, uh, we have a national historic monument in the cemetery, that we have a higher, uh, percentage of veterans and historic burials in our cemetery compared to others that we would be competing with. Uh, the, the events, um, with the Lithuanian, uh, community and their president of the cross, and also our historic Russian section, we believe poise us to be really, uh,
well, yeah, well situated, to be able to receive, uh, something, and to certainly be able to receive back in, uh, you know, in something.
And we, we, we wanna go for the best we can. We feel like, uh, because of the strain of other activities on Lucy, she would not be the best candidate at present to write that grant. And so we feel like HLA would be great for that. And so we are, yeah, we're seeking that you.
Could you read that over to the floor?
We, 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 I would, I would motion that you accept the committee's, uh, recommendation.
To apply for?
To apply for this and to authorize, you know, to enter in an agreement with HLA. For, in the, of around twenty-five hundred dollars. And then again, that we would seek these two sources of payment.
You made the motion on second.
Okay, moved and seconded to proceed with, uh, you know, cemetery improvement grant. Questions on the motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
I like hearing that better. Alright, so, um, really, what, what I saw happen tonight is that one, two, three people came in for the seven o'clock meeting. Unbeknownst to them, we started it. So I, if you guys would, uh, bear with them a little bit, maybe we could give our, for our chief a little chance to say why he came here.
Say why he came here. Why are you here?
And then, uh, and then I think maybe there might be some citizen comments, and, you know, it's a little out of the ordinary, but.
Sure, no problem.
I move that we amend the agenda as you've discussed. Okay, I see.
Second.
Second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Andy Mike John, you're phenomenal.
Oh, yeah, go, go get the idea.
Yeah, go get the idea.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, uh, I was in the middle of an officers' meeting, so I have three new lieutenants that, uh, have been appointed at this time, so getting them up to speed and kind of discussing where we're going as a, uh, unit. Uh, we've got engine five-eleven still down in Yakima, we'll be picking that up, uh, possibly Thursday, bringing that back. Uh, we're scheduled for pump testing this next week, so we'll get that pump tested. Uh, E1 has discovered that when we bought that engine, or got that engine, uh, it wasn't wired right, so it's been on heavy overload, so it shorts out every now and then, uh, with the warning lights. So, we're in the process of, uh, rewiring, or there's two options of rewiring or re-lighting. Uh, we're gonna go with the re-lighting, so that we'll have all LED lights on it, and it should grow, run the load that it, uh, causes. So, we should be eliminating that problem, and it should get us another ten years on that engine. Uh, the brush truck, we ordered a new light bar for that, there were some problems with that. We're in the process of either combining that with another light bar, or, um, making that unit work. Uh, we discovered that there were some problems with a, uh, heat riser, and Eric at the city shop got that fixed along with some, uh, glow plug seals, and, and it's got that up and running for us, so, uh, other than that, we're still looking for volunteers, and I apologize for being late. Any questions for me? Uh, I know I was supposed to report on the fire, so real quick, uh, fire on railroad. Uh, we were paged out at four, I believe, four fourteen in the morning on five-twenty. Uh, it came across, uh, our police officers in town were, were on scene at approximately four sixteen, and he reported that there was flames out of the front and back. Uh, we were en route at, I believe, four eighteen. Uh, I immediately with the report of flames out of the front and back, toned out Fire District Seven, and we're on hold for backup. Uh, we had five engines on scene with approximately twenty personnel. Uh, it was extinguished rather quickly and contained to a back bedroom, so, and it's still under investigation at this time. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for excellent response.
Yes. At that time of morning, you guys got out of there quick.
Yeah, uh, in, in response, in six minutes, and on scene with three, so, uh, real quick response. Uh, we had an attack crew, two in, two out, established rather quickly, and, uh, got it out.
Alright, thanks. Well, um, I would open up, uh, citizen comments and non-agenda items if there's anything that wishes. Even though the meeting is essentially over, if there was something they wanted to address the council, you're free to at this time.
Yeah.
So go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Oh, come on, there, oh, good.
You still got, what's your name? Even though it's informal, we're still gonna make it.
Good evening, I'm Viddy Bogart with the Claylon Downtown Association, and thank you for listening to me tonight, Mayor, and to the council members. I have to say, I'm disappointed on the storm drain being deferred, but I understand finances, because we really do want to move ahead with revitalizing our downtown. And I encourage that we somehow get that bid out in the fall, and know what we're gonna do next spring, because from my standpoint and my job, it impacts events. As you know, and part of what I do is try to increase events downtown, so to bring more tourists, more people in, and help our economy downtown, so, I understand the decision when it was made, but Lucy, we won't have to meet tomorrow.
Okay, we can still meet.
We can still meet. And then also, um, I didn't get a chance to hear about the, um, other resolution that you were talking about tonight, or report. I apologize for being late, I saw the agenda, but I didn't see the topic, so, thank you for listening.
Any others?
Christine O'Slean, I'm representing Tuckaway, which has been sold, and the owner is looking at closing it if we can't prove that we have sales.
If you're.
Last, if, if we can't prove we have sales, that ju, that justify having that business there. Last year on the Fourth of July, we were closed off in front of, our entire block was closed off for the entire day before basketball, and the street vendors were put up by Farm and Home. That had a significant impact on us. The car show always has a significant impact on us positively. It's a very big day for our store, and this year, this car show is up in the, at the high school. When we're looking to show a new owner that we can make money and that we deserve to be there, it seems like everything is working against us. I don't understand, nor does the gentleman from Westernware understand or anything else, why the car show is not in front of our place. It impacts us, it impacts the orchard, it impacts the caboose, all of us are losing money with that show being moved. We need business downtown desperately. We have four months to prove that we deserve to stay in business, or you're gonna have another empty building. Plain and simple.
I think we're pointing at John.
We're part, we're all pointing at each other.
Well, uh, yeah, it's complicated, I have to tell you. Uh, the car show, you know, I don't know that I should be really the one to address the First Street.
So because of the project, it was moved up to the high school, so.
Project that's been delayed, correct? Yes.
Right.
Which we just found out tonight.
Right.
It would have been really difficult to have the car show with the Stormwater project.
But the car, it's been, you guys have deferred that, so is the car show gonna be moved back?
So, the, the car show is a pro, um, the Rotary puts it on, other organizations put that on, it's not something that the city of Claylon puts on.
Because somebody has to let them know that it's okay.
That will happen.
I'm on the car show committee of Rotary, but we already put all our advertisements out, so my guess is, it's probably not gonna be in the back at this point.
You'll see people pulling their cars faster than flies die in a hot kitchen. I mean, it is not gonna be much of a show.
And I've bet with them too, and they just didn't want to move one more time to a place, and there wasn't a place downtown, so.
Okay, so let's see, there was a car show, what was the other one? The basketball?
Well, I don't know if you're gonna do this Fourth of July, we're dreading it, that it's gonna be closed off again, and the street vendors will be someplace else, and once again, we won't have any draw for people to come into our area of downtown, and truly, there is, let's face it, Tuckaway's the only store that sells a lot of stuff, I mean, you've got a few people, but when they close, I'm sorry to see it, because I like Claylon, I grew up here. And to see that store close and become an empty building, and that man does not care. He bought it just for the real estate, because down the road, he'll put in another bar and grill, and that was his plan.
I can, I can certainly sympathize, um, the, I can tell you that the people that have spoken with me specifically, one of the names that you mentioned, uh, one of the businesses said that they had their best day, uh, on the three-on-three tournament, and I can tell you.
Well, they got, they opened their lounge when they finally opened the lounge, they got something in there. But they're not gonna, I mean, are they gonna get that this year? Are we gonna get anything there this year?
I know, I know, operating right across the street, that I, I don't want to be argumentative, but we personally saw an uptick in sales during that time.
We saw an uptick in customers coming in, not sales, and you couldn't have seen the sales.
Okay, well, thanks for addressing that. I think that's it on comments then. So, uh, is there a motion to a there?
I motioned to adjourn.